Consolidated plan. Come on up, subject matter experts. You've got plenty of room, pull a chair on up, yep.
Oh, we have three, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, our city partners, yay. Welcome.
All right, well, good afternoon Chair Harrington and Commissioners, thanks so much for the opportunity to be with you. My name is Shannon Wilson and I'm the Program Manager for our Office of Community Development. And I'm joined by my colleagues from Hillsborough and Beaverton. Would you guys like to introduce yourselves?
Sure, hi, nice to see everyone. Chris Hardy, Senior Project Manager for the City of Hillsborough and our Office of Community Development.
Good afternoon Chair Harrington and Board, my name is Javier Mena and Affordable Housing Manager for the City of Beaverton.
Great, and we also should be joined online from one of our consultants named Carly Bouts. And so she's really available during the, if there are questions around the data that she can respond to, so she should be joining.
Hi Shannon, I just wanted to let you know our Zoom link is not working, so is there someone I can communicate to to let her know the correct Zoom link to join?
Oh, um. Our posted Zoom link doesn't work, but we do have a Zoom link for the meeting, we just need to email it to her somehow.
Oh, okay.
Shannon, why don't you go ahead and get started and I'll work with your team member.
Okay. Thank you.
And then you do have the clicker in front of you, so you are in charge.
Okay, great.
You might have to turn the clicker on now. It may have gotten turned off. There you go.
That's good, because I didn't see a power button. And before we start, I did want to mention that there was a small change to one of the slides from the initial broadcast. And that was because there was actually just an error in the font, so it didn't translate over, so it wasn't readable, so that was slide 15. And so that was updated with a correct font that we can read, so it just went to that note. So we are here this afternoon to provide an update to your board on the 2025-2029 Consolidated Planning Process. And so first, just to start briefly with an overview of the consolidated plan. It is a five-year strategic plan that prioritizes the investment of federal funds that our office administers along with the cities of Beaverton and Hillsborough. And we estimate that for this upcoming five-year period, that amount that we'll have collectively to invest is roughly 35 million. And so the plan process is built on an intensive community engagement process, so it looks at housing and community development needs. And it is also required by the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, which administers or allocates these funds for us to administer.
And I can't help myself, I need to jump in at this point and say, I'm really excited about this. Because I remember when three of us were new, how the development of the prior plan helped us learn more about the characteristics of our community and different needs in different places in our community. So I'm excited that we have a second shot at a new five-year plan.
Great, definitely, thank you Chair. And so we wanted to also provide as a way of kind of setting the stage for our presentation, some goals that we had for the consolidated plan process this time. So because it does occur every, every five years, this is my, my first time participating in the plan in this way as Program Manager. And, and a lot of things have changed too in the past five years. So the goals that we had in this process, we're first to size the process to the allocation. So I think as your board is aware, these allocations often are stay the same year over year or decline. And so we wanted to make sure we were sizing the process based on the funding available. We also wanted to highlight and take into account everything that's changed in the last five years. So definitely the pandemic, obviously, and then a real influx of local funding through the Metro Affordable Housing Bond and supportive housing services levy. And so, and also changes here at the county with the development of the Office of Inclusion, Equity and Community Engagement, the Economic Development Team. So just really acknowledge and incorporate those, what has, what has changed. And as a part of that, our process goals also were to meet community groups where they're at. So we went out, there are a lot more community groups it seems to be than five years ago. And so, so we wanted to go where they are and hear from them directly, and so we really prioritized that. And, and I think got a lot of candid, candid responses by doing that. We also engaged experienced consultants, so we are working with the same consultant we did use five years ago, Root Policy. And they do this kind of work throughout the country, so it's great because they're always working on a con plan. We only do one every five years, but they're, they're always working on it, so it's really helpful to have their expertise. And then finally, our goal in this process is to develop achievable goals. So again, with regard to our anticipated allocation amount, we wanted to set goals in this plan that are achievable with the funds that we have, have available. This is a collaboration, so between the county and the cities of Hillsborough and the cities of Beaverton. So there are three types of federal funding that are directed by this consolidated plan. The Community Development Block Grant Program, the Home Investment Partnerships Program, and the Emergency Solutions Grant Program. So both Hillsborough and Beaverton, because of the size of their jurisdictions by population, they're large enough to receive their own allocations of Community Development Block Grant. And then our office administers that for the balance of the county. And then our office also administers Emergency Solutions Grant and Home, the Home Program throughout the full geography of the county.
Can you remind me what the term is for the fact that these are two cities? That historically, there's this phrase I have in my head, something like entitlement cities? That has something to do with your population is 50,000 or above, which Tigard now has, but has chosen to remain to not be, have a standalone CDBG program like your two cities. Have I got the phrase right?
No, definitely, it is an entitled city, entitlement city.
Entitlement city.
Received an allocation and, and I think that is a, and I'll go back and look at it. Shannon, two years, every four years, we have to reconfirm our commitment to the partnership that our council approved, I believe it was two years ago.
Okay.
That we want to continue this partnership. One of the things that we did look at is, okay, if we do not, what would be our, the amount of resources that we get from home funds? Which is the other important force, our funding source, it was very minimal. So it didn't make any sense to that, and the collaboration works tremendously well as it is, so it just made a lot of sense.
Terrific, thank you, I didn't mean to detract from the presentation, I should have held my comment.
No, and you are correct Chair, the population threshold is 50,000, and so Tigard is a, they are considered a joint entitlement. So they do receive, so we receive their allocation, but then we let them direct half of what would be their portion of the allocation. And they use that for a homeownership program, so.
Cool. Is that your calling that you were expecting?
Yes.
Excellent. Hello, good to see you.
All right, so we will keep, keep moving. Oops, so I just wanted to very briefly go over those, so these are, again, are the three types of funding that are directed by the consolidated plan. And just a very brief overview of them, so the Community Development Block Grant Program supports infrastructure facilities and single-family housing rehab projects, as well as key public services. All for the benefit of low and moderate income households throughout the county and low and moderate income areas as well. And then the Home Investment Partnerships Program supports the production of regulated affordable housing throughout the county. And then the Emergency Solutions Grant Program provides funding to help individuals and families quickly regain housing stability after they've experienced a housing crisis or homelessness. And so then turning back to the consolidated plan itself, there are five key elements of the plan. So community engagement, needs assessment, housing market analysis, strategic plan, and then action plan. And then the full process, including public comment and all of the drafting and review of the plan and approvals. That all needs to be completed by May 15th of 2025, which is the, the due date to HUD. So we'll go more in depth on the timeline later, but just in terms of the overall kind of hard stop deadline, that's what we're working towards.
I, I can't contain myself, I really am excited about this. Because we are each elected by our districts to make countywide decisions. And this is one of the foundational platforms that teaches us more about the community need and community conditions. And to then scope out what kind of programs might they then pursue under the consolidated plan to improve those conditions.
Thank you.
I'm such a nerd when it comes to this.
So the first component of that, our first element of that plan is community engagement, which we did begin in March with a kickoff event that was held at the Hillsborough Civic Center. You can see it there, it's photo featured on the slide. And then we held a variety of consultations with those community groups. So particularly some new ones that weren't, that didn't exist, at least to my knowledge. And the last con plan process are the Latino Policy Council, the Broadband Action Team, Small Business Support Network, and the TV Highway Corridor Group, which is led or facilitated by Unite Oregon. So in addition to those consultations, we also had an online and paper community survey that was provided in all of the county's safe harbor languages.
Did any groups drop off?
Oh, that is a good question.
You'll have to check and get back.
Yeah, I would have to go back and, and look, yeah.
I don't see any, that, nothing comes to mind.
Yeah, that is a good, good point. I know there was an anti-poverty work group, and that group kind of disbanded with all the reconfiguration of the homeless solution, you know, all that work to build out that system of care with SHS funds, so I know that changed. But, but yes, I'll look at that, posting it back.
The Solutions Advisory Council.
Yes. And so looking, just wanted to touch, I know there's a lot here on the survey, or on this slide, just wanted to touch on a couple of components of data about the survey respondents. So we had a total of 2,269 residents in the county who responded to the survey. And so if you look at the far right column of the chart, which says Wash County and then ACS 2022. So those are the demographics for the county as of 2022. And so then you can see next to that, the demographics of the survey respondents. And so they do, do mirror, you know, do reflect pretty closely the demographics of the county overall, which was, was great to see. They don't really in the age category, there's over-representation of, of adults. And that's because, you know, under 35 includes all, all children as well, and the survey wasn't for children. So I think in general, this does reflect, is reflective of the demographics of the county. And so I did want to go over a couple of our preliminary findings from the survey that our partners at Root helped us analyze. So we put together the survey in our office and then, and with Beaverton and Hillsborough. And then Root did a lot of the analysis of the survey results themselves. So the next few slides are all oriented in the same way. So the first column, the blue, is, is Washington County overall, the green is the city of Beaverton, and then that golden rod is the city of Hillsborough. And so each respondent was able to select any of these high needs, they didn't have to prioritize among them. They just said, is this a high need, yes or no? And so that's why the percentages are very large, you know, they don't add up to 100%, obviously. So, so 56% of the respondents in Washington County, for instance, said the construction of affordable rental housing is a high need for housing in Washington County. And so for, for this area, the top two are really kind of stand out. So that construction of affordable rental housing and then affordable rental housing for older adults, as well really as permanent supportive housing. So in that category, there seemed to be kind of a top, top three. And then moving to public facility. So we asked about different areas that, that can be funded with our community development block grant funding or home funding. So again, trying to focus the process on what, what we can achieve with the funding that we have. So you'll see there, the top two kind of stand out for a mental health center and then a homeless shelter. And in some of the cities, you'll see some difference, like in this case, the library stand out in the city of Beaverton. And a center for abused children kind of stands out in Hillsborough, where that's not reflected when you go back to the full county. And then moving to public services, they're really like a top, top four or five maybe in this category, they're all pretty close there at the top. So mental health services leading that, held by substance abuse services, rental housing subsidies, fair housing activities, and then childcare services. And then you'll see like domestic violence services, that really comes out more significantly for the city of Hillsborough. And so those differences can help the cities as they determine, you know, how to use their allocation of funding in their jurisdictions in a way that, that reflects these, these findings. And so then looking at infrastructure, the top two in this category were road improvements and sidewalks. And I did also want to highlight broadband infrastructure, because I think it may have been included in the last consolidated plan, but it really has, has elevated in terms of being identified as a need. And so just want to call that out, that broadband is increasingly seen as, as infrastructure and as a key component of our communities.
So I was having a conversation yesterday that reminded me that I need to ask. In this case, is broadband infrastructure as a title encompassing both broadband infrastructure in terms of, for example, getting internet to my house or high-speed internet to my neighborhood versus my ability to afford the internet access, the broadband internet access? I'm assuming that for the purposes of the survey, it includes both.
That is a good question, I believe it is, you know, we use that kind of general descriptor. And so then it was how it was interpreted by the survey response.
Moving ahead, we're going to need to figure out, but I think we're going to need to be able to drill down with people. Can you afford your internet access? Or, you know, something, some other kind of question that will really get to the heart of ability to pay versus, because our countywide broadband study shows us that 96% of our urban communities are, have access to internet infrastructure. But whether or not they can afford to access is a different matter.
That is a good, good point, yes, thank you Chair. We have been talking with economic development, yes, economic development about their broadband study and had some conversations with them, them around that, so we definitely want to have that distinction as we go forward. So then moving into the second element of the plan, which is where we're, this work is kind of underway now and it being drafted. And so that's why we have just some preliminary findings for you today. And so this is really looking at American Community Survey data and then other data that, that Root has available to them. And so looking at 2017, which was the data that was used to inform the last, the 2020 to 2024 consolidated plan. And then looking at the most current today, which is 2022. And so that first, the chart on the left is looking at the median gross rent. And then the chart on the right is looking at median home value. So you'll see there's a significant increase in both, both categories. And really particularly for, for median home value, so overall throughout the county increasing 49% and ranging, you pull out Beaverton, Hillsborough and Tigard, looking 46 to 52%.
Could you help round, so another follow-up that I have on this slide is what median income is?
So we do look at.
From 2017 and 2022.
I think we do go to that.
Later, okay, great, that's fine, don't go there now.
Okay.
Because I look at the first graph, you know, median gross rent. Wow, rent goes up anywhere from 24% to 50% in a five-year timeframe. I don't know too many people's incomes have made that leap. Thank you.
Yes, so I think it is on this next slide, actually. So rent, yes, rent, home value, and then income changes. So it's a little bit of a different chart, but it, the red and blue columns really match up with the data that was on the previous slide. So the red is the growth in median gross rent, the blue, growth in median home value, and then the green is growth in median household income. So you will see that home value is appreciated over twice the rate of income growth in Washington County. And then significant margins in all the, the cities as well.
It's interesting that Tigard is so much higher in, in terms of the median household income.
Double. And I know that they, and I don't know if Carly wants to jump in or say anything about that, but I know the, based on the size of the population that was available, so Tigard is using five-year averages of the American Community Survey data. And the other jurisdictions in the county as a whole are using the one-year, so it's a little bit different data set.
Close to orange.
So a little bit with, with Tigard, so I don't know if Carly, there's more to say about that.
Yeah, Shannon, I think that was, that was a good explanation of that. Another thing is that, just sort of based on a couple of supplemental data sources I looked at in sort of preparing for this meeting and anticipating that question a little bit. It looks like Tigard has had a big shift away from employment in, in jobs that pay less than $25,000 a year and a large shift towards jobs that pay over $100,000 a year. And so in the last 10 years. And so I think to better understand that, our team would probably have to do a little bit more digging to see why exactly Tigard is so much higher than the rest. But I'm happy to write that down and get it to you in a memo, if you're interested.
Great, thank you.
Of course.
And then looking at that, the issue of income in a slightly different way, but looking at it by cost burden by tenure, so by renter household and by owner household. And so you can see actually that the rent burden for renter households really didn't change as a whole for Washington County. So it was 49% in 2017 and really stayed the same, a slight difference in the type of cost burden, or the, the, kind of the, the quality of that being rent burden, so whether they were just cost burden or severely cost burden shifted at 1%. But in general, that remained, remained the same for the county overall. And then for owner households, that cost burden did decrease slightly. But you'll see still very, pretty similar, you know, 24% versus 22% overall.
Wow.
And then finally, for this needs assessment, preliminary findings, looking at some data on the homeownership rates in the county. So this just compares the, those two years, 2017 and 2022, by those jurisdictions and in Washington County as a whole. So a little bit of a decrease overall in the county, and then a slight increase in Beaverton and Tigard, and slight decrease in Hillsborough.
Can I ask a question about this, particularly given the visibility that your consultant Root Policy has? Is this, I tend to think that having a homeownership rate in our community of 50% or greater, to be pretty good. But I can't tell you why, I, I don't. So I was just wondering, compared to the national landscape that you have visibility into, are we in the norm or better than some? What are your thoughts? Or I'd be interested in learning more through the consolidated plan about that.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's something we can also look more into. I just pulled up the national homeownership rate, I don't actually have it off the top of my head. Nationally, the homeownership rate right now is sitting around 66%. And in terms of sort of value statements over necessarily, like if that's, if the US is doing better in terms of homeownership than Washington County, or how, sort of how Washington County aligns with the US, and that it sort of depends on the needs of the community. And so I would be happy to write that one down as well and sort of place that homeownership rate in the context of the national, the national trends.
Well, I also remember that when we were working on the Affordable Housing Bond Program in referral, that the city of Hillsborough specifically wanted to ensure that they were working on homeownership opportunities. Through the Affordable Housing Bond Annual Reports, I've not seen that the city operationalized that aspiration. And, but I think it, it just underscores, we know that this has been a need, will continue to be a need. But I'm wondering if we're at that inflict, inflection point of saying, no, we, given the, the trends that we have from the preliminary findings, that we're, with the exception of Tigard, which has had a lot of UGB expansion, we're, we're not on a solid upswing that maybe we should consider doing more for homeownership opportunities than we have in the past. Just an idea.
Yeah, that's, that's a really interesting question. I'm actually standing in today for our managing director Heidi Agler, who's managing this project. I've been involved with more of sort of the, like more granular data analysis, like what you see on this slide. And I haven't quite had a chance to sort of contextualize that in, like what you were referring to, the programs, the local programs that are being run. I am happy to talk to Heidi a little bit more about that and just sort of ask her what her thoughts are on sort of what the implications of this data are for programming currently running, running in Hillsborough, and what sort of can be done about that.
And I see our, our CAO, Tanya Angie, has something to add here.
It's not always that I lean forward, so that's how the board usually knows that I have something to say. So I want to bridge a conversation your board had this morning with this conversation now. So Ms. Wilson and Ms. Rogers are already working on, and Commissioner Fie, this came out of the question you had asked in this morning session around what are our homeownership programs? So we will take this conversation you had, like what are our homeownership rates? And then also lay out what are our homeownership programs here at Washington County, so you can have that information for future discussions.
Yeah, we talked, when we worked on the prior consolidated plan, we also talked about homeownership, and then we had COVID. Some of our, our plans flexed.
Great, thank you. Yeah, did you want to comment?
Yeah. Chair Harrington, thank you for your reference to the city of Hillsborough and our programming around affordable homeownership. Affordable homeownership is of utmost importance to our council for multiple reasons. Wealth generation, pride of ownership, access at a time where homeownership has never been harder to access due to rising home prices. So it's, it's a, it's a key priority for us. How we've operationalized it is primarily through CDBG funding. And we utilize the majority of our CDBG funds, upwards of about $400,000 of it per year in partnership with Proud Ground on affordable homeownership and acquisitions. In addition to that, we've donated property to Habitat for Humanity. We have properties, home, 18 townhomes under construction now over on Century Boulevard. And in addition to eight townhomes that were just completed. You're right that we also included it in our metro bond local implementation strategy. However, in these cases Habitat was saying that they were able to execute without the use of bond funds. So we were not necessarily the guinea pig there. But I do know that there are some communities managing to make that work, although it hasn't been easy. But yeah, just wanted to clarify the ways that we're approaching affordable homeownership.
Yeah.
Really important.
Yeah, using every tool you've got in the toolkit, keep going.
And then the last slide I have on our preliminary findings, also related to homeownership rates, but by ethnicity, race and ethnicity. And so you can see that it did, homeownership rates did increase slightly for Asian and non-Hispanic white households, as well as a slight increase for Hispanic, Latino, and those with two or more races. I think the most significant about this, this chart is a significant decrease in homeownership rates for Black and African-American communities. And so definitely want to dig deeper into that, to understand that, as well as the decrease for American Indian and Alaska Native populations and the Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander populations. So that was just to kind of give you a sense, again, of some of that initial work that is occurring on the needs assessment element of the, of the consolidated plan. So this is a look at our timeline overall for the plans, we're kind of in the, in the middle, right underneath where it says 2024 in that July through September range there. So Root is working very hard and closely with us on drafting that needs analysis and market analysis, as well as the draft needs and goals. And then we'll move forward with the upcoming public hearing, and then through the drafting process, and then go back out for a public hearing once we have a final draft, and then take it through our policy advisory board and to your board for, for final approval in April, May of 2025. So I did want to highlight again, this is a collaborative process with, especially with our other entitlement cities, with Beaverton and Hillsborough. And so just wanted to give just a couple of minutes for either Chris or Javier, if there's anything you wanted to comment on with regard to our collaboration or this process.
No, I, I thank you, Shannon.
It is not often that I have in my professional life that it has such a pleasure working collaboratively with Washington County and Hillsborough. And it's not only represented in the CDBG work that we've done and continue to do, but also other partnerships that we've done, such as the Metro Bond and some other programs that I, I thank you for the leadership and inability for the teams to be able and willing to collaborate in such a manner. The, the result of this work and this collaboration is only going to help the community that we serve. So thank you.
Yeah, thanks for having us here today on this important topic. And I would echo a lot of what Javier mentioned. I've managed our affordable housing work and our CDBG work now for about seven years. But I've been with the city of Hillsborough, working in Washington County for just over 16 years now. Commissioner Willie and Commissioner Teresa will remember when my hair was a different color. And what I would say is, is that similar to what Javier just mentioned, I've seen a lot of great working partnerships over the years with the city and Washington County. There's many, many examples. But I feel like on affordable housing, homelessness issues and shelters and then deploying these federal funds for support to our low and moderate income communities is amongst the most powerful partnerships that that we have in place now and the closest working relationships that we have in place now amongst staff. I'll just give you a specific example of that. So Hillsborough sets aside, I mentioned what we set aside for affordable homeownership. We also set aside about $200,000 a year for housing rehabilitation. And that's for critical home repair, roofs, ADA ramps, electrical, sometimes mold, you know, real life safety kind of stuff. We had an incident probably four or five months ago where there's manufactured home community in Hillsborough, just south of our downtown, where the sewer lines backed up on the private property. And I will spare you the details, but it was not good for those homeowners, those community members. Not only did you have City Public Works Department getting right out there, making the repair on private property, which they they did first and then asked questions later, which was good. But you also had the Office of Community Development really deploy because we have a close working relationship where the Office of Community Development actually helps administrate our our program. So you had Office of Community Development Staff, Brian Fogg in particular, get out there on site to take a look at what was going on and actually helped relocate, working with us, those community members that were impacted for a couple of weeks while their properties could be addressed and fixed and cleaned up. So I mean, just, you know, these, these programs.
Health issue.
Yeah, well, and yeah, and it's just a great example of how these programs really impact. I mean, we look at a lot of data, but we are talking about our community members. And so that's just one example of how the partnership has been really meaningful. And we are, our work cut out for us. You see numbers that reflect the pandemic. We're in housing crisis, as we know. So we got our work cut out for us, but it's that ongoing work and the ability to just help improve people's lives, working together as staff that's made a ton of difference. So just wanted to point that out and and look forward to continuing to to work with your, your team.
Great cheers for the Washington County way.
And finally, just to close on our presentation, I know we have this timeline here to just have some immediate next steps just to share with your board. So September 3, we will be coming before your board is in a public hearing for our these are two components of the consolidated plan, the community participation plan, and then the language access policy. And so those are how they describe how we will use both of those things, how we'll be engaged with the community and how we will provide a language access during the next five year period. It's all occurring September 3. And then in the fall, September and October, we will be going to those following those groups listed on the slide there to get feedback on our draft goals and priorities. And then we will also be having to in person open houses and a brief online survey to get feedback on that. So those are just kind of the immediate next steps as we look to this fall. So so with that, I really thank you for your, for your time. And we're happy to take any comments or questions or or any other feedback that you have. Thank you.
Commissioners, do you have any comments or questions?
Well, first of all, I'm very involved with your group through the Policy Advisory Board and I the, the leadership Shannon, that you've, you're, you're relatively new to this job. How many year, how many years are you in? Three?
Almost two.
Almost two. And you've really done a great job in stepping as far as stepping in and developing these programs, making sure that we meet our timelines, making sure we have everything in in place. And your staff is doing a great job too. So I just want to say thank you.
Thanks so much.
Yeah, this is great information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Harrington, I have a comment and a question. My comment is, thank you for your work and thank you for joining us this afternoon to present. Chris, I will always remember you with this hair color. So the, the question I have is, I know both of, all of you expressed that your tenure with this work is not 15 years or whatnot. So the question I have is the assessment and the number of respondents for either city or county looks pretty drop in a bucket, pretty significantly small compared to the population that live either in either cities or the county. I'm wondering, part one question is, how does that fair to the last five year assessment that has been done and the turnout for that? How does that compare? And then I'm just wondering what your process was to do the assessment. And if you set yourself a goal to say, we're going to get a, our return rate will be this number and we won't stop until we get this many turnout respondents. So just walk us through if you could distinctly what your process was. And then I had another question about the respondents.
Yeah, definitely. And thank you, Commissioner, for that, for that question. So we did
Slide eight.
Have a, yes, I can go back there. And so actually Eva Polly, who's here in the audience from our team, and she was brought on in a limited duration position to work on this role. So she came in in November and really quickly just came up to speeds very quickly and really did this work on the survey. So our, our goal was to, was to exceed the number of respondents that we had in the last con plan cycle. So I believe we had closer to 1,800 responses last time, so five years ago. And so that was, that was our goal. Our goal was also to to specifically try to reach different communities of color. And so we did that through our partners. We do contract with culturally specific organizations. And so we did ask them to promote the survey, like the Somali American Council of Oregon is one example, Central Cultural. So we use those existing relationships as ways to spread information around the survey. We also did create a newsletter for our agency or for our, excuse me, for our office as a way to spread information around the survey. We also worked with the, with Toby Lyons at the county, the Language Access Coordinator, to review our survey questions and to give feedback on how accessible they were to the, the public. I know it can be a challenge for you know, people with different levels of of English. So it's not, not a perfect thing, obviously, but we did work to to make it as accessible as possible. And then we worked with Hillsborough and Beaverton to really help spread the word. It was in their newsletters, on all their social media, as well as the counties to advertise for the survey. And then for the, the paper portion of the survey, we actually sent it to all of our Chris mentioned, the Housing Rehab Program for Hillsborough. We also have one throughout the county. And so we did a mailing to, to 500 of the recent clients that we've had in our Woodstove Exchange Program and our Housing Rehab Program as a way to a lot of those clients or program participants are in the more rural areas of the county and often older. And so that was why we sent, you know, paper copies of the survey to them. So so those are some of the examples of the outreach that we did in the, in the process.
Thank you.
Just real quick on for Beaverton, we also connected with our boards and commissions, all of our boards and commissions to ensure that they had access whether it be a paper or the online survey to be able to respond.
Thank you. Thank you for that answer and explaining your process, Shannon. The other question I have is around the data and the survey findings. And in slide number eight, there is significant, it looks like quite a bit of number of people above the income category of 100,000 responded. And then when I compare to the next slide in terms of number of people who said, yes, this is important. Because I think you said it was a yes or no question. The response.
Right, yes.
And I find it very, it so, so it surprised me, some of the data and some of the respondents answers around preservation of homes or lead based paint. So were you able to sort of disaggregate some of the returns? The, the, this survey to try to categorize people who said, no, this is not important to me, were the higher income. And it's, it's not something they could relate to. And couldn't comment on that. So they picked the no, because there wasn't another answer or was just sort of yes or no answer. And there's no way to track, he said, based on their income.
Yeah, that is a very good question, Commissioner. I am not sure. So this data is not disaggregated by, by income. I'm sure we can take a look at that. I know we also this is just kind of a snapshot of or a high level of some of the, the questions that were in the survey. It's not all of them. We did ask some other questions around like around whether they wanted to move from their community or how stable their housing was. And so so we definitely have some more data we can dig into and then also look at disaggregating it too by, by income. I think that's a very good point. So thank you.
Yeah, I was just gonna agree that it makes sense, given that the consolidated plan is for federal funding that serves low and moderate income communities. So to understand this priority list for those populations specifically, I think makes a lot of sense. Yeah.
Can I ask one quick question? I just.
Hang on. I'm going to stick on this one. I would just like to add that as you have this data, particularly on slide eight, it would be helpful to include on this slide what area median income actually is. The other thing I want to reinforce is that the income is not by people, it's by household. Go ahead, Commissioner Willie, you said you had a second thing?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out what you, what you just asked me.
On, I was on slide eight. So you can see how it has in the third section under income, those are household incomes. Okay. But we don't have a reminder here or in the later slides of what current area of median income is for individual as well as household or or older for that 64 or greater where they typically don't have any children. Yes, that's where the individual comes in, Catherine. Sorry, sorry.
If we go to slide 12, and Chris, this will be for Hillsborough primarily because I know that you have your own broadband services there that the city runs. And so it says that 33% under the city of Hillsborough emphasize that as priority. Is that, you think that's, yours is higher? I guess it's, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's higher than the other two. Do you think that's because you have that service and they think it's an important service? Or is this a indicator of you'd like to, they'd like to see you expand that service?
The, the question was need.
Right.
And the current Hillsborough program only has geographically certain areas of the city.
I understand that. Yeah, Chris, could you?
Yeah, Commissioner Willie, thank you for that. And, and I think you're on to something there on, on a couple of fronts. One, when I notice it being quite a bit higher than Washington County and Beaverton, it makes me think that the fact that the city has gotten its feet wet with providing municipal broadband may bring that to front of mind more so for respondents in Hillsborough who see that it's available in some areas, but not all areas yet. And then I do think also that it could be a reflection of need as well, because we know Hillsborough has you know, communities where there is a digital divide. There is, you know, areas of concentrated poverty within Hillsborough. So I think that could be part of it as well. What I can say is, is that even though Highlight the broadband has yet to be deployed citywide, we have attempted to start with areas where that digital divide is, is at its most severe and to offer reduced rates for folks. So I, I think it's all of those things probably combined. And, and we'd have to look at the data, maybe with Root a little closer to unpack it a little more. But I, I think you're right. I, I think, I don't think it's coincidental that it came out a little higher with Hillsborough in that business now of, of providing some broadband.
Yeah, thank you, Chris.
Anything else, anyone?
I, I just had a back on the slide eight. Unlike you, I thought that number was good. I, I'm, so I'm just saying that 2,000 plus. When we look at the other surveys that we do, what LUT, through other organizations, I thought the response looked good, is how does that stand up against what we do normally in the county and nationwide?
Well, I think the library is going to blow your mind. They're 20,000.
Well, that'll be great. I mean, yeah, we would look forward to learning from their survey process. We did yeah, tried to work with Community Action also. They were doing a community survey, you know, we had heard there's been kind of fatigue around surveys. And so we did try to collaborate on that. It just didn't quite work out with the type of, you know, everyone has a little bit different data points they're gathering, but definitely, you know, always eager to improve. And so we'd be happy to learn from the libraries.
At least you're beating last year. So, yeah. Five years ago, but it's still, yes, five years ago, but it's still here.
I think Commissioner Phi to that, I mean, surveying, sometimes we struggle with surveying results and getting response, response number goal that we strive for. And I really applaud the team and I'm going to call it knocking on and asking for help from many avenues. And this is a space we continue to lean into. I want to maybe reflect on one process that's sticking out to me, the redistricting process. And I think you had brought a similar question, like, why did we get such a low turnout? Sometimes there are surveys that may be of more interest. Also, if it's a place based survey where there's individuals that can take the survey and it's about the facility they're current in, currently in, that sometimes we get better results. But I just, in this process, the staff from all three jurisdictions have really had a robust effort. And it is something we continue to learn in. And it's not a one size fits all approach, unfortunately.
Thank you. So, thank you very much. This is really great work. When, prior to the next steps, as I was looking at your slide 18, I was thinking about, oh, okay, so how do we really show how we use the plan? So I appreciate having this slide, absolutely. And I look forward to the availability of the draft plan so that I can learn more from just the preliminary findings. But when, because when I saw that slide, I was like, ah, I wonder what Acre would think of this, because this is a foundational five year plan. And related to that, I was thinking, well, yeah, so how do we ensure our community knows the serious work that the PAB uses as well as for year two, city councils use to actually program this? So I would like to ask for another slide, if I could, not for today. But when you But, um, when you come back to us and also before you take this to Acre, to the Housing Solution Advisory Committee, to the general public, I would like to see that same portion. But if this is a blank sheet of paper like this is, that graph is over here. And I would like to see the five-year timeframe of how PAB uses CBDG home funds, ESG funds in action. And I don't mean in detail, but things like, so you circulated the survey. I saw it on different platforms come through. But I've also seen your push for getting examples of CBDG funding. And so that's the, the simple graphic I'm looking for is we do all this work on the plan so that we can make real changes in our community. Yes. So that's all the rest of the slide is, is for next, next five years. You put dollars into action to improve people's lives. Because for the three of you who are our point people on this, that is exactly what you're doing. And we can't achieve those results without you. So, um, this isn't just some, you know, little process to create some boring plan that meets some regulations, da, da, da. No, this helps enable, remember when I used the bouquet example? It's because of this foundational work that we're able to put dollars into action and help transform our community. And I'm just hoping that we can help connect the dots in our community. That's all. I'm really, really so proud of the work that you're doing. I was afraid when I saw this on the rolling agenda that I was behind the eight ball. I was like, oh no, I missed all those, those, uh, result presentations. And I, I missed learning from all these plans. And I was so relieved to find out, oh, no, no, we're coming to you with the preliminary findings. So, uh, we are a very appreciative audience, as I know your city councils are as well. So thank you so much. I'm on the journey of learning. Please keep us going. Do a great job on those next steps. Thanks.
Well, thanks so much for your time and thanks so much for your support as well. We really appreciate that.
You betcha. To the bus tour.
Yes, so C D B G bus tour on Thursday. Yes, thank you.
Thanks for joining us. Alrighty, um, next we're going to move to board and leadership communication. Who would like to go first? We talked this morning about how, uh, three of my colleagues went to the International Water Association Conference. So now we're just, um, helping one another sync up on the cool activities that have occurred since we last met on August sixth, which was about two weeks ago. And what's coming up? For this week, thank you Commissioner Tries for mentioning the CBDG bus tour on Thursday. I can go first. It seems like a long time ago, but we'll talk, I'll talk about the fact that before I left, I did have a, an impact coordinating committee meeting. And, uh, we've got two impact meetings in September. The COO's recommendation on the, the. S H S reform? No. Oh, the U G R. U G R comes out at the end of August. So I wanted to, we're gonna have a second, uh, quick meeting of the impact coordinating committee. Because really what we, what we do in the impact meeting will change depending on what the report looks like. So I just want you to be aware that that report comes out. It's something that I will highlight for you and I'll send it out. But it's, uh, I'm, you know, waiting with a little bit of bated breath on that. So that's, uh, that's an important piece. I also met with Miles Placios. He's the new, uh, impact participant from special districts from THPRD. What I didn't know is that Miles is also now working for AOC. So, and I was not aware of that. So our meeting was, you know, about impact and about AOC business. So, so that was, that was good. See, this week I have, um, a meeting with Chief Deputy Alro K. I guess we're gonna be doing that together with you this time, Commissioner Willie, that's good. And then the bus tour is Thursday and I'm spending almost all day there. And, um, I'm also getting a chance to chat with the matrix consultants for the jail capacity needs assessment. I missed that discussion earlier because I was ill. So looking forward to that. And then the, um, the other thing, just mind, there was something I wanted to bring up too about. That's, that's enough for me. Sorry. Okay. Commissioner Fire, Commissioner Willie.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I think I did my, I, I'm trying to figure out what happened since we left for, uh, Toronto. I almost said August, but it is the month of August. I think, I think I gave my update about Toronto. Now I don't think I have anything else to add. I, I did have, I think our board remember that many, each of us are serving different committees, the, the library, the library levy conversation or the public safety conversation. Chair Harrington and I are on the public safety conversation committee. And we did have our first, um, meeting and sort of a preliminary where, where, where things are in terms of the numbers. And, um, let me know what information that you'd like to get from that committee or, um, moving forward.
I assume we're gonna have presentations. So, um, things are evolving there. Uh, as Commissioner Fai mentioned, we have had our first initial steering committee meeting. What, uh, in working with staff, what we're setting up is we will continue as the two board liaisons to that work. And those work products will come to us in our board work sessions. But in addition, uh, Aaron Calvert is working to set up additional board briefings for the three of you who are not liaison. So you'll be getting more information.
And that will be the similar approach to libraries because we know there's such a strong interest from all board members.
And then the other thing that was significant that happened, I feel like Toronto took over my mind. But was the hopscrum breaking, which I think Commissioner Willie stole the show. Did a great job and it was really, um, significant. And you are the highlight there. So congratulations.
A little biased, I think, but. That was a fun event. And, um, yeah, I think I ended up with another shovel.
You did? Two shovels? No.
I took my old one. That was.
Perhaps you give one to Washington County.
Yeah. I don't know what Washington County would want with it. But anyway. So are you, are you through? Yeah, you can tell that, um, September's coming at us because as, when we pass over Labor Day, then everybody gets back to work. Because then we've got two and a half months to Thanksgiving and then we're running hard. So, um, I could sense that coming back from Toronto, I was way behind in a bunch of other things. So I'm going over to Gaston tonight. I remember that I have six cities in District Four. And I try and meet with them two or three times a year with those. And, and so I'm meeting with Gaston tonight, find out a little bit about what Commissioner Tries has been in her appointment on, um, regional solutions. Solutions, yeah. And the ball fields out there that always are underwater. And if there's something we could do with that, go ahead.
I just want to, in relationship to that, the regional solutions team prior to my engagement there had worked on that issue. I highlighted that and asked Clean Water Services what was going on there. And I copied Commissioner Willie because it's his district. Other than that, I, and the response, there wasn't a lot of, of solid information there. But I just want to say that's why I'm included in this because, but it was work. Because you're our regional solutions, uh, rep to the metro regional, metro area regional solutions. But I'd also like to say one reason for the flooding of those ball fields, dealing with the flood plain, the Twalton River and the hydrological management, the water management for the Twalton National Wildlife Refuge. Not Clean Water Services, but rather the way the feds manage water is different than how other agencies manage water.
Yep. So.
It's complicated.
Well, it's, I, I just appreciate you looping me in because I didn't know that there was any work on that. But I do know they've had trouble with their ball fields staying dry. So.
It's hard to get spring baseball going when, you know, it's.
Running through mud.
We're like water.
So, yeah, uh, and again, uh, the Salmonberry Trail Foundation Board is tonight, which I will not be mad because I'll be at Gaston. But I mean, so they're, uh, looking at, um, fundraising and moving to the next steps of both in Telemok and, uh, out here and around banks. And so that'll be interesting to do that. So let's see, two transportation projects, uh, the New Corn Pass extension to Butter Nut Creek is one of them for this week. That is.
Tomorrow. After Water Fest.
Right. Um, so that, that'll be fun. It's always fun to see those projects that have been long-term finally come to completion. ROMAC Thursday morning. And then, uh, again, the timber conversation is, um, starting back up again. I have a meeting with the Small Table Group at eight o'clock in Salem on Friday, followed by ten o'clock Forest Trust Lands. Are you gonna sit in on that? That's on Zoom. So, okay, I'll bring back the report on what that conversation looks like. And then after that, I'm heading to Seattle to catch a Mariner baseball game with my grandson and my son. So that'll, that should be fun. And just a heads up, um, airshow is coming to McMinnville on Labor Day weekend. Only instead of Friday, Saturday, Sunday, it's gonna be a Saturday, Sunday, Monday show. So, uh, and they've got the Thunderbirds should be a great show. So.
Wait, which airshow is that?
Uh, it, well, it used to be the, it used to be the Hillsborough Air Show and then.
But I thought they had that in.
So they can't have jet teams, the big jet teams? Can't have them in Hillsborough anymore.
So which airshow is, are you going to?
Same one. The Hillsborough Air Show puts it, um, or the Oregon International Air Show is in two places now. It's in Hillsborough in the spring where they have our airshow. Then they have the big jets in McMinnville.
Okay. Alrighty. Thank you for setting me straight. I appreciate that.
Yeah. That was, that's, McMinnville's a challenge to get in there. There's only really two ways in. There's one from here and one from coming in from Sherwood and Newburgh. And so, yeah, it gets pretty messy out there. Anyway, it's worth the show.
Cool. Alrighty, well, uh, just to make sure I cover a few things. Last week, uh, while you were all in Toronto, Canada, I was more or less sequestered at home with my husband having COVID and eventually my having it and the wonderful little head cold that goes along with it. But boy, did I get a lot done. All of my meetings pivoted to, um, to virtual meetings and I was grateful for it. On, uh, the first Monday, I had my monthly chair mayor's meeting. That one was, um, I wore a mask. Uh, I was COVID negative. And, uh, it was that one time a year where we, I tried to have us meet in person. So some of the mayors, uh, opted to attend Senator Merkley's Washington County Town Hall. But those of us who got together really enjoyed catching up on what are some of the political goings on in our community? So that was fun. Had a S H S D C P B meeting and what was notable there was having, uh, metro staff come in and talk about the COO recommendations. What struck me is that there was a funding memo that the Metro Council received on August first, which I think I've aired and not sending to you thus far. But the metro staff who were speaking to the council's progress in discussing these recommendations has neglected to share or highlight that memo to fellow communities. So, um, I'll make sure, I believe I sent it off to the mayors, uh, recently. And I've, have forgotten to get that to you, or at least I have forgotten to remember if I have or haven't. Uh, I wanted to give you a heads up for the employee preparedness fair for Washington County and Clean Water Services is coming up on September eleventh. Yes, that happens to be the same day as our AOC district date meeting. But see Horizons for further information about that. There, there is a, a schedule if you'd like to be there for certain activities. I had, uh, a couple of different, uh, unusual, uh, opportunities while you were away. The, um, Friday, two Fridays ago, the, uh, council general from the country of India who is working out of the Seattle office. They now have a full-fledged council general office in Seattle covering eleven different states from Alaska over to the Dakotas. So he made a push, Prakash Gupta is the council general. And he has, this is the second time he's been down to our Portland area, just meeting with different folks. And so we had that on Friday afternoon. Ms. Angie and Diane was busy. So Jack Tan, uh, Jack Taniguchi, that is, Jack Liang, excuse my faux pas there, attended. And then on Saturday, the annual India Cultural Festival had moved from Portland Pioneer Square out to the city of Beaverton, which they really liked because it gave them a more expansive space and was really just a lot of fun, amazing, uh, celebrations, music, dance, performances as well as the food that had the whole area for food and vendors that the Beaverton Farmer's Market is held. But the day before that, we were able to host the incoming, or no, excuse me, the new assistant director at HUD or Field and Policy Development here as well as some, uh, regional staff from HUD, the Housing Urban and Development Department here of our US government for a local tour here in Washington County. They heard about how we were making great gains and so they wanted to hear a little bit more and go see. So there was a tour. We stopped at the Safe Rest Village at the Aloha United Methodist Church, run by Hartwood Commons, also visited Nuevo Esperanza in Hillsborough. But I wanted to share two particular compliments that our area has received from the Assistant Director. And that is that we've put our money where our mouth is because we have gone to the voters for the local funding for both the Affordable Housing Bond and S H S before asking HUD to do more. Okay? And the other was the level of partnerships and collaboration. So. So, uh, very, and the speed to which we've been able to make progress and put money into action in our community. So that was pretty exciting. And I already spoke about the Public Safety Levy, so that's it for me today. So, thank you. So we'll move to leadership communication. Who would like to go first?
We'll switch it up.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Jerharrington, and, uh, good afternoon, Board of Clean Water Services. So tomorrow's a big day for Clean Water Services staff, so it's Water Fest and they're going to have it at the new Clean Water Services Central Building. So if the board has time, it's from tomorrow from one to four PM. I hear Elizabeth has some tough duties. She, uh, volunteered for the Water Challenge Tank. Which involves dunking of water, I, I think. So it, it looks like it'll be fun.
I'm only making an appearance.
What, what time is it?
Yeah, so it's from one to four.
Two thirty to three is Elizabeth. No, 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 uh, we're checking that.
Let's engage the team at the, the building and, um, to, it's a summer event that we do to bring the staff together. I'm gonna have two new crowns on my left side, so I may be a little, um, droopy when I get there at one, but, um, yeah, I'm really looking forward to it.
Oh. Can I interrupt for a second before you, you were done, right? Uh, I forgot to mention that the three county chairs have a meeting with Metro President Peterson on Thursday. As he just report reform. Ms. Angie, how's it going?
It's going awesome, isn't it? Um, so first, and Nefisa, Commissioner Fai had touched briefly on this, but I do want to draw your attention to the library, um, survey. Um, as the board is aware, we are working through a funding and governance process with our partners. Um, we did have a community survey. This is not a scientific survey. This is just open to the community survey. So I think, uh, this also provides an opportunity as we move forward to clarify what type of survey or type of survey instrument we're using. Um, the, the survey did run from July eighteenth and closed on Sunday, uh, August eighteenth. The goal of the survey is to help our consultants, which is Marina and Company, to do the analysis of the current state of the cooperative. And to understand what residents value about library services, what potential barriers there are to accessing services, with a special emphasis of historically underserved communities and residents who don't use our library system right now. So drumroll, the response from the community has been overwhelming. We received eighteen thousand two hundred and fifty-six responses to the survey.
How many postcards did we send?
Oh, jeez, I don't have that in my, I mean, it, it's significant, significant. And what is of notable, and you will get more for, you'll get further information, is the, uh, responses in several different languages. So we have historically, the county and governments have really kind of struggled in getting, um, different language responses. Of note, four percent of the responses are, were in Chinese, Spanish, um, or, um, Vietnamese, which is a much higher percentage than we see, um, in other, in other surveys. So now the consultants and the team are diving deep into the wealth of data, but just wanted to just continue to be on that journey. Um, um, in the WCCLS, uh, process. Two data points also is WCCLS and member libraries provide excellent services. Ninety percent, uh, strongly, um, agree or agree. Public libraries add value to the community. Ninety-three percent strongly agree or agree. I don't think those are surprising results. They're just affirming, um, affirming results to our libraries, uh, library system.
One, one thing, and I should have asked this in the consolidated plan as well. It would be through these different, uh, uh, constituent connection point surveys of different types. Uh, it would be interesting to know from the respondents, just the simple question of, for the primary language, excuse me, spoken at home, is it English or another language? And if possible, if so, which? And one of the reasons, uh, that this is on, on my mind is a friend of mine is the board president for the Beaverton Literacy Council. And she shared with me COVID changed the landscape for English as a second language training here in our region. Uh, so, uh, BLC, and it isn't specific to Beaverton, it's this region, shifted from in-classroom to primary, almost exclusively online. Last year, when they opened registration for their fall quarter, they were amazed at how the registration rate grew up to a hundred and eighty. For the same twenty, for the same forty-eight hour time period this year for opening registration, over four hundred and fifty responses. No, they've been online for four years now.
Oh, okay, so.
But the jump from last year to this year is huge. And part of that is because of the immigrant, uh, shifts here in our region has also grown as well. So I think it underscores for me that there's more to learn as a policy and investment maker about the composition of our community.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Chair, for that question and that information. So, um, the census does point to, um, languages spoken in home. And I think what you're raising is what are those common questions that as a county we want to embed within our surveys? So even though we may do different survey types, um, scientific, non-scientific, and then there's polling. Uh, but what are some questions that we want to use so that we can maybe see themes? And if they're not statistically valid.
Yep. Hopefully, Tanya, um, during the ARPA discussion, there was, uh, the report, race report, um, for drink. I'm so sorry, Dani, I'm not getting the report right. Yeah, that, hopefully that information, the composition that the Chair is asking of the community will probably include, hopefully, uh, the update.
Yes, Dani is behind me and I see her nodding. Um, yes, okay, now I'd like to transition from libraries to juvenile. Um, so as part of your board adopted Design the Future mission, we are embarking on a juvenile department assessment. Um, we are working, uh, we will be working on this assessment where, in partnership with the Robert F. Kennedy National Research Center for Juvenile Justice. Um, that is a mouthful to say out loud and also to read. Uh, the RFK National Research, Research Center launched in twenty thirteen. And their role is to provide training, technical assistance and consultation to local, state and national leaders, practitioners and youth-serving agencies. The center conducts strength-based assessments that can support actionable change. Their assessments account for best practice, um, in the areas of adolescent development, positive youth development, collaborative leadership, risk, um, need, diversion and alternative response to systems involvement. Low to moderate risk, youth that we serve, trauma screening and treatment, uh, graduated response or sha- sanctions that we may look at, um, family engagement, and I could go on and on, which will be in an email that I will send you as a follow-up. What's really exciting in this partnership is we will be working in partnership with RFK National Resource Center on, to apply for grant funding. This is grant funding, which is available through the State, State Justice Institute. They do award their grants on a quarterly basis, so there is a pretty rapid response. And we do feel that we will be highly suc- successful. What that will mean for the county is that we will only have to pay seventy-five hundred dollars, um, which can be absorbed through the current juvenile department budget. So really good news. Also connected to this assessment will be a look at detention beds. As the board is aware, um, through our budget process, two years ago, we needed to reduce detention beds. And that was based on the, our experiential rating and data over time. Um, and also the need to make budget cuts. What we've seen is our need for detention beds has just increased over time. And so what is that long-term look? What do we really need to be planning for will be part of this assessment, um, process as well. So really, um, appreciate Jennifer Crowley's le- leadership as interim director in this space. Uh, starting Thursday of this week, I will be traveling for ICMA and returning the following Thursday. During this time, Erin Calvert will be serving as acting. And that concludes my update.
Where will you be?
Um, I will be in DC, um, for ICMA Board Orientation, which as president this year, I will be leading that board, um, orientation and then going to Puerto Rico from there for the Puerto Rican City County, um, uh, uh, Management. And I will pre, be presenting on, uh, panel on community engagement and transportation.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Harrington, Board of County Commissioners. I, um, just wanted to give you a slight update about, um, what we talked about when we spent some time together in training in June on public meetings. Commissioner Teresa, you were traveling with Clean Water, but the rest of us spent some time together, uh, talking about public meetings, updating what we know and talking about coming attractions. And in that realm of coming attractions, we talked about how over the last couple legislative sessions, there's been some updates expanding or creating new oversight authority in the Oregon Government Ethics Commission. But we talked about how those rules weren't yet adopted despite the, the bills becoming effective. So we were sort of in a wait and see. Um, I wanted to let you know that that, they are, they have finished with their rule advisory committee process and they are now going to a public, going to some public hearings to accept public testimony and written testimony in a, in the next, over the next couple, couple of months on what those rules will be and looking for implementation in about October. Um, I know, uh, Ms. Doyle's team is watching that process and engaging as well as Rob Bovet from our office. So we will definitely keep you updated as we move into the new, um, some new role, uh, new world around public meetings law. Um, and then that's all I have for you. I also will be out Friday afternoon for one last camping trip before the summer really says goodbye. Um, but I will be available by phone and I believe you all have my cell phone number should you need it.
Terrific, thank you. Uh, one last thing I wanted to mention to my colleagues, but didn't manage my notes and my papers very well. Uh, we have seen through, uh, the last several weeks of constituent communication, some, uh, increased, uh, submissions from community members about the Raleigh Crest Development, which you may recall is in the city of Portland. The redevelopment of the former Alpen Rose properly, property. It does connect with the city of Beaverton for a built-out neighborhood. So the city of Beaverton and Washington County's role is to participate in the, uh, traffic analysis. And so both the city and the county have submitted concerns on that, uh, to the design consultant for the property. And following up on that, as you may remember, I attended a neighborhood meeting, uh, that, uh, Metro Counselor Huang had co-hosted with the Neighborhood Association. And so I was curious about his district boundary. And, uh, I affirmed, uh, my understanding was incorrect. I thought through reapportionment that his district boundary was the county line. That's not the case. He act, his district actually includes Washington County, as does Mary Nolan's district. So we do in fact have, uh, six, five, four, three, and the council president. So five members of the seven-member Metro Council have portions of Washington County in their district. So, uh, I just wanted to share that learning with you. Not that they, those who have just a small portion don't spend any time getting to understand our county, uh, from my experience. So, uh, and that's part of my frustration with the current Metro Council. Uh, while they are elected by a district to make regional decisions, they have made a rookie mistake. I'll call it that in, uh, speaking and having interest only from their district, uh, which is a step backwards. So, anyway, onward ho we go. So, uh, we will take a fifteen-minute break from here and then we, we have two, uh, back-to-back, uh, executive sessions. So, uh, with, when we return from break, um, well, why don't I ask for the, um, the, um, motion to adjourn to executive session, uh, for each of these, but then we'll go each by each. So, um, I'd like us to have a motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to ORS one nine two point six six zero sub two sub I for the purpose of performance evaluation for Clean Water Services. And then following that, we'll have, um, uh, executive session pursuant to ORS one nine two point six six zero sub two sub D for the purpose of labor negotiations for Washington County. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you. And I will come back to adjourning the first one and actually doing the appropriate, uh, convening for the second one. So, but I just wanted to get it all out. Uh, so thank you to the rest of you for being in our audience today and, uh, we're gonna take.